Yeah, it's a big deal.
I went to the Utechno Geeks' conference, DWP has their museum. And in there they have a cylindrical slide rule, which is the equivalent of a thirty-foot slide rule that they use for that.
Attack of the day?
I was happy the day we got rid of slide rules.
I don't remember.
You're playing tomorrow night at TK's.
Never had the basketball.
Really? And then a couple more to Dog Watch, but so.
I saw them a couple around.
Oh, yeah. I'm telling you.
A couple of nice K and E's around someplace.
Probably be hard pressed to use it now.
Yeah. I'm sure I would. I had a high school teacher who had a political cartoon hung on his wall. And you see these two guys in a hard hat. And the description underneath is, I was only a desk school point after, at least get partial credit. And you look in the background, you see this big freeway overpass cloverleaf thing, and it goes to nowhere. It didn't link up.
We always add a couple songs each time, you know. We were talking last night, like, what direction are we going with this?
So where in the San Fernando Valley did you live?
Woodland Hills.
Really? I grew up in Simi Valley.
Did you really?
Yeah.
Right over the foothills. Sure. Yeah, no, I grew up in.
Well, and I would assume that TK's crowd is maybe younger than the Dog Watch?
My nieces and nephews go to school there.
Do they really? In the winter sometimes. It depends on the time of year.
Small school. I remember the day I came, I was about fifteen or sixteen years old. We came over the hill from Simi Valley into San Fernando Valley. I looked across, and over there by Hollywood, North Hollywood Center. There's mountains over there. I've never seen them before.
Sometimes in the summer, probably go outside. During the San Ana winds, clears everything out.
Exactly right.
Get your home for the summer, and the patio is packed.
I was fishing, actually.
I used to be a long distance runner when I was in high school.
Okay.
We would definitely have days where, remember the air quality?
Yeah, yeah. You could feel it.
Well, we'd cancel practice.
Yeah.
Need to play.
I swam.
Well, Oral has brunch music.
Did you?
Yeah, so it wasn't a big deal.
Person there, like playing guitar.
Yeah, they opened a new.
So after that, I just came back, I think I was a couple of kilometers. I knew they were going to, they were down in front of us.
Yeah.
I haven't swam in years. I can't see, I'll take my glasses off. So it's no fun, but I really, I want to learn how to sail, that's my goal for this year.
Want to learn how to what? Sail. Oh, yeah, that's.
That's my, that's my goal for this year.
You need somebody who owns a sailboat, though, you don't want to own the sailboat.
That's what I've heard that, too.
My father-in-law had a thirty-four foot tartan, and we used to sail it up down the bay, in Rose Bay, and up the Antucket, and the Vineyard, and that was perfect.
You ready?
Sure.
Oh, sorry. You ready over there? Okay, because I want the whole world to understand what we're doing. Okay. It's seven-thirty, this is October eleventh, we call the situating board to session. First item is acceptance of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
First item on the agenda. Mr. Kelly, Kevin, welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking some time on.
My pleasure.
Put you on early, and we didn't put you on for long, that was.
I appreciate that.
But we wanted to kind of meet with you, just to kind of understand what you're doing, and then hopefully that as time progresses, if, to the extent that you need support from the planning board, then we'll have a better understanding of how the two groups, so we can interface with you. So I just kind of, if you would, just spend a couple minutes, and just kind of just give us an overview of what you do.
Sure, you want me to sit up here, does it matter?
We are the most informal group that you've ever met in your life.
That's awesome. We like those types of groups.
Unless you're a lawyer, then we tighten up.
No, no. So as you know, my name's Kevin Kelly, and I've been here since August twentieth, and things are going well, I think. There's a lot of people that are happy to see me. There's a lot of things to figure out, and to get all the ducks in a row. It's, past few weeks have been busier, which is great. The beginning of, the first month was mostly, you know, meeting people and learning the buildings, or finding some of the buildings and going around there, but now starting, starting to actually get some stuff done and do some things. I've been to a few training courses, and excited about the opportunity. There's a lot here that I think I can help make a difference on, and help people. The way it's set up now, as you all know, a lot of people are kind of doing their own thing at each building, so it's, it's nice for them to have one central person to go to. One of the things I want to try to accomplish first is get some of the contract-type things centralized with, like, every, every building I go to, they call a different person for a heating problem, and if there's five elevators, there's four companies, and same with fire alarm systems and those types of things. I'm trying to get my hands around those things. And I think over time, get involved in more of the bigger ticket items. It's been great, the people have been great, it's been a lot of fun, and we've been enjoying it.
What's your, I don't know anything about you, Kevin, so what's your background?
Okay, I probably should have said that a little, I'm sorry. All my, I've been thirty years facilities management in the world of education. I was fifteen years at Harvard, and then thirteen years at Milton Academy, the past six, seven years at Milton as the director, and then the last three years at Mount Idaho College in Newton as the director of facilities there. And this opportunity became available, or became known to me, it was something that I'd been looking at, and came over here, and there's a lot of similarities, the buildings, the schools, the nonprofit aspect of it. Buildings are buildings, and a lot of the same problems. It's, the biggest challenges, as with, well, some of the schools I were at, they had some money, so it was a little easier to get things done, but some didn't, and the hardest thing, as you know, is identifying the funding source to get things done, and project, you know, putting together some type of plan to cost it out, to get it done.
All right.
Tell me about your experience as a grant writer, which has been kind of an issue that's come up with us. Have you done it before?
I have not, I've been involved in providing people information for grants, but as far as actually writing grants, no.
Okay.
I don't have a lot of experience in that regard.
Now, have you, have you taken the, the construction management supervision course and become a licensed construction supervisor?
I have my construction supervisor's license.
Okay.
So I have that, and I just recently completed the first step of the MC PPO course for the state.
Purchasing agent?
Purchasing procurement.
Okay.
Doing that.
And do you have other, other professional designations either that would be particularly appropriate here, that you already have, or that you have in mind to attempt to obtain?
Other than, you know, the asbestos license, and hoisting license, and those types of things, no, nothing major, as far as an attempt to obtain, right now, nothing on the immediate radar.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Robert? I guess I'm interested in your previous lives, lives for a couple of reasons. The firm I work for does work for some of the people that you worked for, and some of our best contacts are facilities managers. In fact, I'm in contact with Mount Idaho right now. So I understand what you have been involved in, and I can understand and appreciate the similarities. I think it's probably a little easier to get your hands around something like a Mount Idaho or a Milton Academy, perhaps not Harvard, that would not be too easy to do, but easier than maybe the diverse kind of scattered situations here in a town, in a municipality. But I think it's a position that we've talked about a long time, we've needed filled, and I, I can only wish you the best of fortune and tell you that, you know, the cooperation of this board, I'm sure, is going to be absolute, wherever we can help. There's, as you obviously know, a sort of master plan study in the wind, and I assume that you're going to be participating very deeply in that. Can you talk just a little bit about how that's going to affect what you do, or how you're going to affect how that study is undertaken?
I haven't been involved as much yet in that whole master plan, in the master study. I know some of the pieces that are there, I sat in on a presentation from the Gates feasibility study and those types of things. My understanding is that as that goes further along, and they further identify which way that's going to go, then I will be more involved in the actual making things happen, and working with the vendors, and the architects, and the contractors, to help facilitate the operation, the building of the buildings, and the operation of the building. Not as much as an actual clerk of the works, but as a liaison between the town and the projects themselves.
Right, I mean, in general, for a major project like this, my experience has been the facilities management people get very heavily involved.
Yes, absolutely.
Particularly in selection of the engineering systems, things like the fire alarm, as you mentioned, I'm surprised that the town doesn't have a standard for fire alarms for municipal buildings, you know, game wall, or whatever it might be, that everybody's doing their own thing, that's pretty archaic.
I've spent a lot of time with the, on the ESCO program also, and met with Amoresco, and they're just producing their first phase of their audit, and there's a lot of information coming out of that, as far as centralizing a lot of systems, putting in a lot of new equipment and new systems for the heating controls and those types, which does not exist anywhere.
Right.
And that'll be great, because then someone like myself, or someone in the schools, or someone somewhere can sit down at a desk somewhere and control, or not as much control, but can.
At least see what's going on.
See what's going on, and identify with the problem.
Imagine.
Yeah, so that'll be great, and then anything new down the road will be integrated into that system, as opposed to the couple of systems that exist now, don't talk to each other, or don't, they're not synced with each other.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, great. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah.
Sure. Is part of your initial task, since you're brand new, is just sort of inventorying everything, and getting a handle on that, and helping kind of prioritize, you know, what the bigger needs are, and?
My initial charge, probably the easiest way to answer that, is to go out and meet all the department heads, for lack of a better term, the building owners, and identify what their problems are.
Right.
And then try to address things that need to be addressed, like, right away.
Yeah, short-term, quick stuff.
Short-term, quick, and then as I get more familiar with the buildings, identify more of what the problems are with the buildings, and then develop a capital, long-range plan for stuff that needs to be done with the buildings.
Yeah, do you think this might result in like an RFP for some of these, you know, maintenance issues, where you can get it all in, you know, under one contract for all the buildings, and that type of thing?
Absolutely.
Seems like a lot of your job is to kind of squeeze some efficiencies out of the inefficiencies that we have going right now.
Tie it all together.
Yeah, tie it all together, inventory everything. I know there are sophisticated facilities management programs out there, they inventory everything down to the chairs and all that kind of stuff, is it, what kind of system does situat have, or do you picture situat having in the future, is there anything that's helpful in that respect with?
Right now, there aren't a lot, I haven't been familiar with the schools yet at all, so I don't know what they have, as far as any type of operating systems for their controls or their HVACs, or anything. But there are, like you say, there are a lot of things out there that identify everything, but certainly everything here will be able to fit into something.
Right.
And work.
And I think, one of the things that comes to mind are like the schools and the space needs, and, you know, there's been things over the years talking about, you know, do we make elementary school, you know, kindergarten through fifth, what would happen if we go sixth, seventh, eighth, things like that, and I know a lot of facilities managers can kind of crunch those space needs, and try to rearrange things, and look at the alternatives, but that's certainly on the table with the new study being done.
Yes.
Everything, so I suspect you'll be very helpful with that, so look forward to working with you on that, but welcome.
Thank you.
Well, first, thank you very much for coming in. I think we had discussed that we, you know, just wanted to talk to you about some of what your plans were, or, you know, what you're doing right now, and I think we had discussed that a lot of what this board does, to some degree, probably eighty percent, twenty percent split, eighty percent is reactive, you know, people coming to us with form A plans, or things that we have to make decisions on. The other twenty percent, though, we're trying to be more proactive, and we've gone through the master plan, we've tried to look at things, you know, historic resources, and look at the, you know, the CPA funds, and, you know, somewhere some of that's going, actually, bills on the CPA committee. So I think there are, that twenty percent is maybe where, you know, we might have interface with you when it comes to, like, you know, looking at, you know, what can we do to some of our facilities, or how can we be more proactive? So with that, I was wondering, like, with the CPA funds, I know, like, we have, the last one I remember was the train shed, you know, that was actually sort of a building, but there is, you know, some other, you know, in the history, like, sort of historical buildings, you know, we've done work to the gar hall, the Little Red Schoolhouse, you know, we purchased the Bates House as a town, so, I mean, how does that interrelate with some of your operations, or daily operations, or do you have sort of domain over that, or do you see that expanding, or? I know right now, you're probably in a situation where, again, and I hate to use the word reactive, but like you said, you're probably trying to get everything, all your ducks in a row, and make sure that everything is on a similar system, but hopefully, once that's all in place, then you can start looking maybe more at, I'll say, more proactive, or, you know, how can we enhance some of the facilities that we have?
Right.
Or increase those facilities. So I guess my long-winded question is, have you looked at something like that, or are you familiar with this, the Community Preservation Act, and so what are the, some of the facilities in town that we've actually acquired, and some of the things that we've done with that money?
I'm familiar with what it is, I know what it is, as far as the actual particulars of the town, no, not yet. I have seen some of the work that's been done in some of the buildings. Is the, the train, what's the building down in North Situate, right at the?
The visitor's center, the?
Yeah, the Works WPA project, or WPA building, I guess.
Yeah, right now, I find myself, I'm just not stuck in, but I'm in this, you know, exploratory mode of, people are identifying to me what the problems are, and then I'm going and helping and getting them done, and I think the vision for the department is to create a facilities department down the road, and then a department will help get more involved in being more proactive in all aspects of all the buildings, as opposed to totally reactive, because I think right now, everything is just reactive, and there's a lot of stuff that hasn't even been done. It just because people didn't know, or just if it breaks, someone makes a call, and then I think down the road, there'll be more involvement from myself, I hope, in getting involved in doing things as part of the, those acts, to get the things identified, and remodeled, and fixed up, and used in different ways.
Great.
Yeah, a lot of those buildings are under the care of feeding of the historical group, so they've got it now, at this point in time. Yeah, no, I appreciate you coming in, one of the things that I was concerned about is that we went through, and we went through with ESCO, and we've got Amoresco that's out there, that's going to provide a lot of input, but I think you're about where I think you should be, or where I would expect that you are, you're currently mixing Jell-O without a bowl, trying to find out exactly what you've got out there.
Good way of putting it.
And, and that, so, and that, but I think that having you involved on the alternative energy committee with the ESCO, I think is going to be able to provide at least a good framework, independent of how the buildings ultimately end up being used, yeah, but I think it'll provide a good framework in terms of bringing some consistency between the buildings. When I was on the advisory board, I really never, really appreciated how all of the buildings were independent in a lot of respects, even though they're, they're considered, you know, the school system, if you would, so, yeah, but I appreciate that. So I appreciate you taking time out of your evening to come and, come meet with us, and spend some time with us. We're here, if you've got a question, you can either, you know, get ahold of me, or you can get ahold of the board through the, through Laura.
Okay, and I was going to say the same thing, I'm available through email, or anybody can reach out to me at any time.
Where's your office right?
Actually, I'm working right now out of the Highway Barn.
Oh, okay.
Down, the Highway Barn, spending a lot of time here, a lot of time down there, you know, so we're working up fine.
But he's going to be working at Pier Forty-four, that's going to be the master.
Yeah.
Just with the, with the ocean view.
Water views, right.
Now, is the, is the Highway Barn the one where we did the salt shed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So there's going to be like a big dance facility in there, right?
Yes.
Right around the side. And I think I should know this, where are you from, I mean, are you living here in Situate?
I live in South Waymouth.
Okay.
So I'm from Waymouth.
We have two Waymouthites, is that a right word, or Waymouthers?
Waymouthites.
Well, if it isn't, we can make it, we can put it in definition, it's two hundred euro. But anyway, I appreciate it, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, nice meeting you.
Yeah, appreciate you coming in.
Okay.
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is request to eliminate the special permit condition for the number of signs on Jacob Hatch. Bring your entire team up here, introduce yourself, and tell us where we are.
All two of us?
The whole team.
Hey. Joe Scandow, representing Jacob Hatch Condominium Association, Countryway Associates, and the owners, the multiple owners of Jacob Hatch property. Last we were here, you suggested that we meet with the design review folks for signage discussions. We had a very good meeting, and I didn't, didn't happen to see the notes of those meetings until just a couple days ago, so I had a little disadvantage on what it is that was concluded, other than the fact that the only thing we walked away from the meeting with was good conversation, and a couple of suggestions from a sketch that was made by a gentleman that was.
Mike.
Design review board. Primary to his interest were separating the actual signage from the post, so that there was virtually an airspace between the column or the post and the sign itself, some type of an arch or decorative arch at the top, and the size of the posts not being four by fours, but being something larger in perspective with the dimensions of the sign. And pretty much that is what I think the last suggested design consideration was, although I'm not sure we're a hundred percent happy with it, but, which is, I think, something that you folks already have, is this red thing here. I'm not sure we're sold on the colors. I did, after I had, after I had the opportunity to actually see the notes, and some of the comments that went back and forth yesterday, or the day before, I did send out an email to everybody that was on that, on the copy list, who I believe were all you folks, as well as the two people from Design Review who, who are actually at the meeting, a gentleman named Mike, and a lady named Laura, and with the identical comments, which were, the posts are not, not anticipated to be four-inch posts, they're anticipated to be six-inch or eight-inch posts, as they face the roundabout. The color, although I don't think it's really, I think it was more for clarification, the red that you see here, the red that's on the building is a color that we anticipate is a featured color on the sign. Just as a matter of printing, and ink, and printers, and so on, that's why this doesn't particularly show what it is that exactly represents the redish on the sign. That said, I would still suggest that maybe the coloring of the sign is something that we, actually, we may want to even look at it a little differently, it'd be a little bit more subtle, something like the color of the clapboards with a, with a, with the color of the doors, or something that's just a little bit less loud, and perhaps because we have gold, a gold leaf sign, the only other freestanding sign on the property, perhaps gold around the individual panels. I think more, more to the point is the actual dimensions of the sign, the essential features of the sign, the, the overall anticipated width and height of the sign, and knowing the fact that it's going to have a colonial-type flare. We did talk about figuring some way to put some type of a crown molding around the top, I don't know how visible it would be from a hundred-foot distance, I'm not sure, but if it can be built, we certainly can build it, that's what we do. So, so I don't know, other than, we did ask that the design, that Laura and Mike perhaps even email us, email us a picture of something that they saw, to give us a little bit better guidance, or more guidance on it, and we never got any communication from them, so. But I think, all things considered, I think we're pretty much where we should be in regards to our meeting with the design review folks, and now it's more of a matter for, you know, the colors, I'm not, I'm not sure that we can really get into color, I mean, everybody's going to have an opinion on colors, you know, I'm sure we could have a half dozen different opinions on colors from you folks, and another twelve thousand out here in Situate, so it, we're trying to stay within the color framework of colonial colors, white columns, colors that are fairly consistent with the building, which is a pretty subdued and subtle type appearance, and that's pretty much where we're at. The, Daniel mentioned at the last meeting, let's try to get it right this time, you know, go, do as much as we can to try to get it right, and I don't know what more we can do, we're certainly willing to, to do some more as far as research, but we need a little bit more guidance as to, there are a million different designs of signs out there, you know, if you guys say, let's try something like this, or something like that, we can look at it. But, you know, I think we, we are pretty consistent with what was suggested at the at the Design Review meeting.
If I was here, I think you're right. Laura?
I think the, the picture you showed looks, looks very nice, and not that, you know, there's anything really, you know, really, really wrong with this, but I think that the concern that, that I've heard from the Design Review is just about the colors, you know, the, the design is, is nice, it's pretty simple, it's, you know, got a little bit of a colonial touch with that arch and the post and so on, I think it was just the colors that threw people off a little bit.
I agree.
So I don't know how the board sees it, but the way I saw it was, if you could do something like that with colors that are somehow keyed into the building, to me, that just looks, you know, so attractive and pleasant-looking.
Well, you can actually, you know, it's hard to say what it's going to look like on the sign, but I can read that from here, whereas the other one, I can't really read the yellow on the, the dark brownish-red.
And I think this is a more subtle delivery. We do want to get the, the color of the doors in there, so, because it is an outstanding feature of the building, we do want to stay with the colonial-type colors, and I, and I think that perhaps the reddish backgrounds is a little bit much for, it's a little bit loud for the property, and I hear where you're coming from there, and I happen to agree with you. We don't always agree, but I happen to agree with you on that. But, and again, I can't really, suffice it to say, we may find a better background color, I think the maroon lettering looks pretty good, the idea of maybe a maroon lettering, or reddish lettering, that the country redwood-type lettering on a subtle background, such as the clapboard color, and maybe outlined by the gold, goldish colors that we have on the other freestanding sign, might, might be where we're going to be going with this thing.
Comments from the board?
Well, I like the fact that, obviously, the chunkier posts, like you said, you know, the six or eight inches is great. What's the final, I know that, I think Mike made the suggestion about separating the panels, so that there was some space between them, to give a little bit of visual space, what's the?
Actually, each one of these panels, and it's the same type on the other, on the red background sign, are, they're all, they're each individual panels, they're each, each one is an individual sign.
Right.
Mounted on a backer board, so the actual, the actual border that you see around there is an eighteen-inch-high or a twenty-four-inch-high sign that actually gets fastened to the larger backboard, so it will be identified by its own background, by its own accent color.
Right, but, but I guess what I'm saying is, what I understood, one of the suggestions from the Design Review Committee was that there would actually be, like, you know, you could put your hand through the individual spaces, like, there would be separation where it says Jacob Hatch, then there'd be like another, like, maybe eighteen inches, and then the sign, and then another eighteen inches.
That's doable.
I just wondered, what, what was your thought on it?
I, the more, if you have a backer board, it makes the, the posts a little bit less susceptible to racking, so that makes it a little more, more structurally stable, although we anticipate putting the posts on concrete piers, and they're probably going to be, probably going to be steel posts, perhaps, and maybe they'll be wood, but in all likelihood, they'll be steel, wrapped and made to look like wood, perhaps, with caps on them, but depending on, the larger panel has a tendency to stabilize things, but that said, I'm sure we can figure out other ways to stabilize it, if, if that's what we end up deciding.
I was just more curious of what your feedback was, based on the, what the board had, had suggested, in that particular case, what the thought was back and forth.
They actually didn't mention airspace between the individual signs, they, they did talk about space.
They talked about individual signs.
I thought there was a sketch.
Yeah, I think you said about the sketch, the little handwritten sketch there, it looked like, yeah.
Well, there was a sketch I saw, I think maybe from Mike or something, if I'm recalling, there was actually space, yeah, like, that one to the right, there's actually space in between, but?
Uh, yeah, I, actually, I took this to mean an individual, you know, the individual signs mounted on the board, but I don't think for us it makes much difference, for, all it means for us is we just add additional tabs on each column to hold four individual signs, so it's, it's, it's six of one half dozen or another to us, as long as we can stabilize the columns, and, we did put some plywood, a lot, a plywood sign up there, just a blank. And we did put some plywood, a lot of plywood sign up there, just a blank plywood sign up there a few weeks ago. And of course the wind took it, took it away. Right now it's back up, it's crooked. This will not be crooked. And it just helps to stabilize stuff.
That's fine. Now, the other thing, I know that you've had, I've been noticing, I think there's at least three different locations that you've been plant, or you've been testing around the Rotary. Well, there was the original location where the temporary sign was and now it's to the other side.
Just a little bit to the left, yeah.
And then there was the other plywood sign that was sort of a temporary sign. So what are you leaning toward? What are you thinking now?
Where the plywood sign, the blank plywood sign is now, just if you're standing in the, at the Rotary, just slightly to the right of that, maybe two feet to the right of that is about where it'll be. Because it's, it's a, there's a nice arc, or nice arch between, there is a utility pole and then there are trees and then there's an open space in between them. We're going to try to center it in that open space so that as the tree grows, it's not going to interfere with the sign. And it also is a little bit more, a little bit less of an obstruction to try to, if we bring it too much to the right, then the utility pole gets in the way. So we're going to try to center it in that opening, which is again about two feet to the right of where it's currently standing.
Okay, yeah, I mean I-
Let me, let me in on for a minute. At eight o'clock, we're having a public hearing for the zoning articles for the Fall Town Meeting. We're going to have that hearing as soon as we continue this discussion. So we're going to continue with this discussion and then we'll have the public here.
I mean, I, I, looking forward to the board's approval. Again, as Daniel pointed out, we need to try to cover all the bases about the safety signs, the directional signs, those various other signs that are needed for, for directing people. We do have a host of people that seem to walk into the wrong side of the building because there's no direction to Little Steps Learning Center or Situate Podiatry and people who, who are a little bit sometimes infirmed. They walk up the stairs and they don't really have to because there's three other handicap access routes to the building. So if we can cover those and whatever decision is made in the allowance of this sign, that would be appreciated. And if we, as you say, if we need to come back, we can come back.
Any questions, comments?
Are you done? Yeah, I think the, the one that looks really good, in my particular opinion.
Yeah, I think it looks good. I like the versus the red. I like the other color that you have. And, you know, I don't want to, you know, just keep going on and on with the design. You guys need to get your work done and get going on it. So I think if you can decide on the location, then the temporary sign's going to go away and we can put that into our decision. That's going to go away, this one's going to go up. We'll modify that versus, you know, your original request was just kind of open it up to whatever the bylaw allows, which I think we're leaning towards not doing. We're just going to say you're going to do this sign, take the other one down. And then like you said, we'd have a condition in the approval that you can also do your directional safety signs, that type of thing.
And also informative signs for people who-
Yeah, things like that, that are not, you know, visible from the street, that aren't meant to be big advertising signs, but just internal, you know, directional things and safety signs and, yeah, things like that. And that's fine, so. And I think, you know, I don't think we need to get into every single detail about that sign. I like the suggestion of the bigger posts, you know, we can say the posts will be wood and they'll be, you know, at least six inches or eight inches, whatever we decide. Give the applicant the ability to, you know, add on crown molding if they want to or if they don't want to, I don't really care. I think it looks fine the way it is, but if you want to do that, we want to give you a little bit of freedom to improve it if you want to. But, you know, my opinion is I don't think we should keep continuing this on and on and on. I think we should, you know, they've done a nice job with the design and we should probably let them be on their way and put a couple of conditions on it and be done with it.
If, if it's okay with you guys, in regards to the drafting of that, if you would copy me on the draft, if I can pick up something that may be helpful down the road rather than getting it just only the final version of what's going to be written in cast and stone, it would probably, it might save some angst down the road and more coming back.
Yeah, does that, does that make sense? We don't have a decision drafted for tonight.
Well, I mean, I'm, you know, like, I think about 80% of the way there, I just have a couple of things to work in from, you know, what you all have been talking about, so.
I mean, my only real question, I guess is-
Do it right now if you, if everybody wanted to.
My only question, I guess, is how we phrase, which maybe I've figured out how we phrase the safety and internal signage so that we just make sure that we're only talking about sort of what we all expect, which are kind of the small directional signages and we don't open it up to additional kind of large advertising signage inadvertently or something.
I think maybe that's covered by just a simple sentence that says that other sign, other signage as particular to the building site as one would read whilst on the property, not from the roadside.
Yeah, maybe not, you know, not significantly visible from off property or something like that.
Well, I think every business is allowed to have two signs. They're allowed to have a freestanding sign and an attached sign. I think those are the signs that, you know, that the sign by law allows a business to have. I don't know if you could have another sign within the building like that would say Little Steps This Way and then from another entrance, you know, Little Steps This Way. I think you're only allowed to have those two. But you could have, you know, main entrance, you know, over here or, you know, whatever.
Well, we're going to limit it, I mean, there are a dozen or 13 or 15 businesses there and we're certainly not going to let people have 30 signs out there. So, I mean, there may be a sign for Little Steps and maybe one or two other things, but we're not going to create a lot of clutter on the property. We don't want to do that. I think the sign by law allows, I think it's two signs and I think they're up to, correct me if I'm wrong, 200 square feet each. We're not going to go, we don't want to do that.
Yeah, I just, I don't think it's, it's the planning boards, you know, I don't think they have the authority to vary what's in the zoning by law, so.
I think the difference is I think that since their signage is under the special permit right now, they don't necessarily fall under the general sign. We're actually restricting them further than that because I think initially they came in and said, we just want to be subject to everybody else, but that would allow them to have a couple hundred square feet of giant signage out. And we decided that wasn't, you know, what we wanted, so. So, I mean, I don't know if there's, do you know what you want right now in terms of internal signage or not? That you could describe it or not?
While on the property, we need safety signs and directional signs. It would be helpful to a couple of the enterprises if we could point people to specific entrances rather than have them walk in on other businesses and interrupt them or even have elderly people have to hike the stairs when they don't need to do that.
I mean, my, my only concern really with that is that I don't want it, you know, visible from outside the property. I mean, maybe there's a size restriction. I mean, I don't really care what you do on your own property if it's a small sign that we're not seeing from the driftway or from the roundabout. If it's, you know, you're talking small directional signage. I, you know, I don't, I don't know that the town necessarily has an interest in, in that. It's your, you know, it's your design discretion which you, how you want to run your own property. But I, trying to prohibit sort of things like your temporary sign you have now, you know, the big advertising sign that we all see when we drive by. So maybe there's a size restriction or something we could-
Well, we have to mind, you wouldn't see it from the road anyways. Because if you've gone through the entrance, it's, it's pretty overgrown on the side. So you don't see anything until you go over the bridge. So it's really up to go over the bridge and facing the building to wrap people, particularly the elderly people or people with infants, to go all the way around to the main entrance rather than stopping there, climbing up the stairs.
Let me suggest, given the time constraints that we're under for tonight, let me suggest that it's agreeable to the board that Laura and Joe work out the, work out the, the actual verbiage for it. And then we can come back up and then as soon as that's agreed, we'll put it on the next meeting and then we're done.
Could I ask one more question?
Sure.
Just somebody brought it up. Is this going to be lit?
I think, I'd like to, we'd like to leave it at our option down the road, but for the time being, no. And if it is lit, it would be not lit, probably not lit from the post itself, but lit from the ground. We have to be careful about landscaping and lawn mowers and things like that. So we'd have to do it in a way, the same way that the other sign is lit from the ground and our bridge is lit from the ground underneath the bridge. But we're not contemplating doing it initially, but it may be something we want to do down the road.
I think we'd want to cover that in our decision to say it only indirect lighting, something like that. It's not internally lit, it's not, you know.
I just saw something about that, about you can't do that anyway, so.
Yeah, I think it's part of the sign by law that it cannot be lit.
So I think if we come back, if you, if you guys, your whole team works with Laura and comes up with the language, then we'll vote that at the next meeting. But as they say, I think you got support for the sign and how it's going to look, whether it's got the, you know, the crown molding on it or not. I think you've hit, with or without, I think you've hit what I think needs to be done. The color is clearly, in my mind, something less than the bright red, right? The gold color I think is, fits with the change of seasons as you've got the four inch around the two. So anyway, I'll let you guys work that all out.
Dimensionally, the sign, we're thinking about a sign not larger than the existing sign.
Yeah, I think we'd want to know the, the dimensions, the color, the basic design, the location. And then your internal signs, some kind of, you know, language around that we make sure we're not getting additional kind of large advertising signage visible from off the property. And other than that, I mean, that's my only concern really. I mean, I, I don't really care that much about internally how they want to manage their own property for-
I mean, I'm thinking that, you know, if you had like at your, inside the entrance way, it was people come over the bridge as you said, and there was a fairly modest sign that was a directory essentially that said, this, this one this way, this one that way. And, you know, as long as it's sufficiently portrayed and tasteful, I think we're going to be happy with that. And it, and it sort of solves what you're trying to deal with. Another thing I wanted to comment on is thank you for taking the time to go to the Design Review people. We like, personally, I like hearing people coming back, having had successful experiences there. And I think the people we've sat in the past, we've had good results. And you're just one of the, one of the latest in a group of people that have done that.
Well, appreciate they, we did have a good conversation with them. Just, we just kind of missed the follow up. Laura, do you want to do the draft and then get, and then just email it to me?
Sure, I think that, yeah, we, did everybody get a chance to speak that wanted to? I just want to-
Well, one, I just want to say one last thing is that, really, it's really, it's really quick. Just, also I want to compliment you that it's going to be far superior than what's existing there now. So it's a huge improvement. Your, the whole building is beautiful and what you've done there. And we, I'm sure everyone on the board here really appreciates the quality and care that you've taken on that particular building and the grounds, so.
I'm just going to mention, there is some language that says that there can be other signs for the safety and convenience of-
I was, that's what I was going to say. We're covered by that. You know, you need to be able to direct people to barrier free parking, to barrier free entrance ways. And, you know, also just for convenience to where they should go as opposed to where they might end up otherwise.
I think the only way we have to check is I'm not sure if under the special permit it restricts them to only what we gave them in the special permit. So I think the way it read, they can't do what's in the bylaw now, isn't that correct? That's what you came to us originally.
We're restricted to one freestanding sign.
So we need to reference that section and say they can do this other section.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's a special permit so that we, they don't even get these privileges that are in the bylaw right now. Because we said they can only have this sign and nothing more in the special permit. So I think that's the way to do it, say now they're going to have this new sign, they're going to remove the other one. Plus in addition to that, they are permitted whatever, just reference that section maybe and that might cover it.
I think that'll do that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Joe, would you be able to, to get, you know, a little bit more detail on a plan like Dan was saying? I think that would, that would go a long way to helping get this thing-
Dimensionally?
Yeah, the dimensions and then maybe a location on a site plan where you want it to go.
We can certainly do that.
Yeah, we should really have that attached to the decision, you know, here's the location, here's the design.
We can do that. And we make a reference relative to the existing fence perhaps, because that's a good point of reference for you. Great?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have the public hearing for zone articles for the Fall Town Meeting. I think it's my opportunity to read the notice. If you bear with me. Required by law to read the legal notice. The legal notice. Notice of public hearings for proposed changes to the zoning bylaw and zoning map, Situate Planning Board. Notice is hereby given pursuant to MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 5, that a public hearing will be held by the Situate Planning Board on Thursday, October 11, 2012, at 8:00 PM in the Selectment's Hearing Room, Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, Mass, to consider amendments to the Situate zoning bylaw and zoning map as described below. These amendments will appear as articles on the warrant for the special town meeting commencing November 13, 2012. There are two proposed amendments as follows, and I will read them and then discuss generally each one and then we'll go into the hearing. Number one, the Water Resource Protection District to amend zoning map and zoning bylaw. Changes to the zoning map and zoning bylaw are proposed as recommended or required by Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, or as otherwise needed, including: A, the boundaries of the Water Resource Protection District on the zoning map will be extended to include land areas designated by the DEP as lying within the Zone A and the Zone 2 to the surface water supply and the public water supply wells, respectively that not currently within the zoning district. In addition, two new sub-districts within the Water Protection District will be created for land within the Zone As and Zone 2s for certain uses which impact the water quality of the town's water supply will be prohibited or more strictly regulated. B, new definitions related to the protection of water quality will be added to Section 200, Definitions. Three, language referring to the new boundaries of the Water Resource Protection District in the sub-districts in the zoning map will be added to Section 320, Location of Districts in Section 340, Definition of Zoning Districts. D, multiple changes to Section 520, Water Resource Protection District are proposed, including: One, changes to 520.2, Findings to better reference the importance of wells to the public water supply. Two, changes to 520.4, Use and Activity Regulations to better meet the requirements of state law for regulation of the Zone A and Zone 2s and remove prohibitions on swimming and boating in the reservoir and surface water supply, which are better enforced by the police and others than through zoning. Changes to 520.7, Violations to Add to Director DPW to Town Officials Notified When There Is a Violation of the Section. And four, other minor changes to clarify wording or reflect the DEP recommendations. Two, to amend Situate zoning bylaw, Section 560, Village Business Overlay District by replacing the final sentence of Section 560.4, Requirements for Mixed Use Buildings with the following language. Frontage requirements in the underlying zone districts may be reduced by majority vote of the planning board as long as the existing frontage is determined to be adequate to provide access for vehicle traffic to be generated by the uses of the site. The planning board may require review by traffic engineer or similar qualified professional prior to making this determination. In accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 553G, the applicant, we're getting there, may be required to deposit fees for the employment of such a traffic engineer or similar qualified professional and any unexpected fee shall be returned to the applicant. In all other cases where dimensional requirements are not specified, construction must meet the requirements of the underlying zoning district. The complete text of the zoning bylaw, the current zoning map, the text of the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw and zoning map and maps illustrating the proposed changes to the zoning map are available for inspection during normal hours of business at the Situate Town Hall and the offices of the Town Clerk and the Planning Board, Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, Mass. Any person wishing to comment on these proposed zoning bylaw or zoning map amendments should appear at the public hearing at the time and place designated above. Written comments to the zoning articles will be accepted by the planning board prior to the public hearing. Signed William Lambacher, Chair. Now, having read all of that, let us dispose of the second item first. It says to amend Situate zoning bylaw, Section 560, Village Business Overlay District. It's been decided that that will not be done at this town meeting. We will not be going forward with that article at all. The only article we'll be going forward with is the one for the Water Protection District. That knowledge is the fact that we're not going forward was, was decided based on the, the historical process that we've used and that is to do zoning at our annual town meeting rather than a special town meeting. So even though this change is minor, it's consistent with our, where possible, we would come back and do zoning only at the annual town meeting. We need to do a vote or anything on that?
I don't think so.
So that brings us to the changes proposed for the Water Resource Protection District. I think it's, Laura, do you want to have any, any comments on that?
Do you want me to kind of go through section by section quickly?
Or can you just give us a 30,000-foot overview?
30,000-foot overview, okay.
Of why they're necessary.
Literally why they're necessary, I mean.
Okay. The way-
Anthony?
Yeah, I'm representing the Land Committee. And you're, you're not going to include the second one and then by law, Section 560, the special one, okay?
560 is not being done.
Correct.
Thank you, Grandma.
So the only we're going to do is the Water Resource Protection.
So the reason for the changes to the Water Resource Protection District have to do with the town's water withdrawal permit. The Department of Environmental Protection renews the town's water withdrawal permit every couple of years and sets the amount that the town can withdraw. that the town can withdraw. And, you know, is very much involved with regulating what the town does as far as its water resources. One of the things that they want the town to do is to adopt certain zoning that fits their requirements, which are really the state laws for dealing with protecting wells and surface drinking water supplies. So they have a couple of people employed by the DEP who really take very seriously the job of looking at every town's regulations and seeing where those towns might be a little bit off from what they require as far as zoning. So there are basically two types of changes that they wanted the town to make. One was a change to the zoning map, and the other one were changes to the zoning bylaw. With the zoning map, there were a couple of areas that were tributaries to the surface water supply and the areas that are legally protected in connection with those tributaries that were not included in the Water Resource Protection District. And I think I can kind of summarize where those are. There's one towards the, getting towards the end of Clap Road. I think it's in the general vicinity of where the Arrowood development is. There's a little tiny piece in that area. Then there's another one, which is around the Tilden Estates subdivision, which we, you know, all saw, you know, a couple of months ago. And there's, I think the final one is some land behind Stockbridge Road, between Stockbridge Road and the train track. It actually is outside the business district, so it doesn't, you know, bring in any land that was, you know, not in the district before, in the business district. So anyhow, so those areas, you know, DEP is telling the town, really have to be included in that, you know, general protective district. Then the other changes are to the zoning bylaw. Just quickly, there's some additions to the definitions, which cover things like hazardous material, hazardous waste, some of the phrases that they use, like treatment works, utility works, and then Zone A and Zone 2, which are two of the areas that they want to protect, you know, the most. The purpose and the findings of the bylaw, they had some concerns, didn't address protecting the wells enough, so some new language was added to that. The use and activity regulations, they wanted to have some separate language that they were very specific about for both the Zone As and the Zone 2s. Those have to do with prohibiting a lot of uses that, you know, a lot of towns really would like to, you know, maybe not have in very visible locations anyway, things like junkyards, you know, wastewater treatment, some other things that have, you know, obvious potential impacts on the water supply. They don't want snow to be dumped from outside the district, you know, within these areas. They want to try to keep the impervious surface to a certain amount, which I don't think is really terribly difficult to do, but they do have some regulation on that. So those two districts are sub-districts of the big district, and those sub-districts are new. Those were never there before. But DEP is telling the town that those have to be created and regulated now. So that's that part. And then within the Water Resource Protection District, one thing that was taken out was the prohibition on swimming and boating. And the only reason that was taken out is to have that in zoning, it's really hard to regulate it because the zoning enforcement officer isn't around on the weekends, in the evenings, when, you know, people, you know, might be doing some of those things and maybe doing them more than, you know, during the workday. So that was something that was taken out, but there's going to be new signage put up that says, you know, no swimming, no boating. And, you know, they think that that will be helpful, and the state also recommended that those types of uses be regulated through the state law, and the police can go out and, you know, if they see somebody swimming in the reservoir, they're going to, you know, drive down there and tell them to leave. So that seems like a much more efficient way to regulate those things. The only other changes had to do with, there was a special permit process that the DEP did not want for the Zone As and the Zone 2s. It was kept for the areas outside of the Zone As and the Zone 2s. And the same thing with the variance process. They said, you know, we do have to make one last little tweak to address this, but...
Did you all cover that language change?
Yeah, covered. Okay, good. Anyway, the DEP did not want to have any kind of variance process spelled out. So that's basically where we are.
Good, very good, very good summary.
Thanks.
Just to follow up a little bit, we've met with the WRC Water Resource Committee several times. They had a working subcommittee. We met with them, went over the language suggestions that they had, which were then, at that point, reviewed by town council and formally by DEP, as well as comments from the board of selectmen. So we put that all together, and that is the net result of what we've got for, was published within the legal advertisement. The one change that Laura just made reference to is under 520.6, and it says, the current reading, it says, "For all uses within the Water Resource Protective District, the following design and operational guidelines shall be observed." We're going to add, within the Zone A and Zone 2 sub-districts, where the activities subject to these guidelines are more strictly regulated by Sections 520.4B, 520.4C above, the stricter regulations shall apply, and the variance process provided in sub-paragraph F below shall not be permitted. And that relates to the restriction that the DEP was looking for. Do we have that? So that's the only change to the language that has been reviewed by the groups that I just made reference to. Are there questions on the board? Questions on the public? Anthony?
Some of this is, one is required, I understand it's required, it's part of the requirements for the new water withdrawal permit, is that right?
Yeah, these are, the DEP language is provided to us, and we have to comply with that to be able to come back up and complete the process of applying for a water withdrawal permit. And that's what really started driving this.
Exactly.
And then as we went through it, they then came back up and said, "Well, we really need to define a Zone A, which is the influence water supply, and Zone 2, which is the areas of contribution." So we now define those within the area. And we put down each of the prohibitions and what's permitted, special permitting and everything else within those two. So I think if you look at the bylaw and understand that it creates a Zone A and a Zone 2, then in effect it becomes relatively clear as to what we're actually doing. Any other questions?
That's why it's important to be done at this special town meeting.
Absolutely. This allows us to continue along our water withdrawal permit.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself and ask your question.
Judy Anderson, Drummond.
Yes, please.
Cudworth Road.
Okay.
When you speak of the reservoir, is that on the left-hand side, going hand the reservoir, and then Tac Factory Pond on the right side?
Yeah, as you're headed down towards the water treatment plant.
Yeah. Because on the DEP, on the Tac Factory Pond Bog Area Maps, they have Tac Factory Pond where the reservoir is, and they also have Tac Factory on the other side, too. They have Tac Factory on both sides.
Well, on the map that we have, as you're going south, it's on the right-hand side? I don't know if everybody agrees with names, but...
It would be on the right-hand side, going this way, south.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, heading toward Marshville.
Okay, good.
Tac Factory Pond on the...
On the right. On the right-hand side.
The original pond, the natural pond.
Where it's red right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then on, so what would be on the other side?
That's the reservoir.
That's the way it shows it on the map here, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't got that, but yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the same map right there?
I think, yeah, that is the map.
You can look at this map right here if you want. I think that's the same map we're looking at.
Is that the same one?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Tell us who you are.
Patricia Butler, and I live right next to the Tac Factory Pond. Okay, so just for my, my, where would you say the high water mark is?
Well, if you want to see where your property is relative to that Zone A, I mean, I, you know, we know each other over the years, and I know where your property is. I think that it is largely within that Zone A area.
Right. I guess what I'm asking is, when it really rains, the water dacks up to sometimes half of my yard. So would you say that half of my yard is the high water mark, or are you just saying the reservoir on the other side?
I think so, but, I mean, they have to pick a line for where that buffer is. And I think it's not based on where, when it floods. It's based on, you know, the normal height of, you know, whatever the normal height of the reservoir is. But they have a line on the map that they're going to have to use because they have to come up with some boundary. And, you know, I mean, it does look like most of your property is inside of it because you're right on the edge of the reservoir there.
Right, right. All right, so the second question is, can I continue to mow my lawn and stuff like that? It says 150-foot buffer.
Well, that 150-foot buffer, that's been there all along. That's not, you know, going to change.
Okay.
So whatever you've been doing, I'm sure you can just continue to do because it's, you know, it would be grandfathered anyway.
Okay. We haven't changed the area. Alls we did was just give it a new name. So the area is basically unchanged. Alls it is, is now you've got identified within there is a Zone A or a Zone 2. You had a follow-up question?
Yeah, just the maps that I've been looking at, that I'm glad you guys know where the reservoir is, you know what I mean? Because this has Tac Factory on both sides, and the map right out in the hallway has it that way, too. They have Tac Factory Pond where the reservoir is.
This map here is the one that's consistent with the bylaw.
And that's the newest one, so they'd be replacing all the other maps, or?
Yeah, that's actually referred to in the bylaw.
Referred to in the bylaw.
August 7, 2012.
Any other questions? Do we need to close the public hearing?
Yeah, and then you need to make some kind of a vote to recommend a town meeting.
Want to vote before we close or to close it?
Yeah, you might as well vote before. I have a draft motion, and part of that is your report to town meeting, because you really, you know, can make a report about why this is important and so on. So I made copies of that for everybody so you could see, you know, what's being proposed for your report, and changes here.
Is it a two-pager?
It should just be one.
I have multiple motions.
Just one motion, or just one page? Yes? Yeah, these are on the side.
Motioner have the motion? Does the motioner have the motion?
Oh, I was just reading, making sure everything was okay. Do we all agree that... Okay.
You have to move him finally.
All right. I move to recommend that town meeting adopt the proposed changes to the Water Resource Protection District, including changes to the Situate zoning bylaw and town of Situate zoning map, with the addition of the following language at the end of the first paragraph of Section 520.6, Design and Operations Guideline. Within the Zone A and Zone 2 sub-districts, where the activities subject to these guidelines are more strictly regulated by Sections 520.4B or 520.4C above, the stricter regulations shall apply, and the variance process provided in sub-paragraph F below shall not be permitted. And to make the following report to town meeting. The town must comply with the conditions of the Department of Environmental Protection for maintaining its water withdrawal permit in good standing. One such condition is adoption of zoning, which meets the requirements of all relevant state laws as interpreted by the DEP. Therefore, the planning board supports the adoption of this zoning.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ananamous. Now I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're almost right on schedule. The next item on the agenda is to review the sign, site and sign for compliance, the Green Bush Ice House at 17 New Driftway. Welcome back.
Thank you.
You're like an old friend.
Sort of like a summer vacation.
And may I say before we start that I think everything you've done, it looks good.
I don't think so.
Thanks.
I think it really does.
They did a nice job. We're pleased with it. We had, they came back and we supported everything. We had that wind, and they hadn't tightened things enough. We'll get all that done. So far, it's been working well.
And it looks significantly better than one to the neighbors to the north.
It really does, yes.
I agree.
So I think where we are now is to come back up, look at the sign, and decide for your compliance with the special permit.
Yeah, I think we have a motion. Do you have a motion?
I know there's a motion. I just saw one.
There's a motion, and before we get to the motion, the, I mean, the sign, I think it's kind of a nice, low-key sign. It's not, you know, too big or blaring or blinking or internally illuminated or any of those things that the town really doesn't allow anyway. But I think that everybody thinks that the awning just came out great, and everyone that I've heard from, and, you know, the business needs a sign. There's only the one sign. It's a little bit off the road, but hopefully it does the job. So the only thing I think that's left to do on the site has to do with the rain garden in the front, and that's not really anything to do with a sign or the certificate of occupancy. So it looks fine to me.
Any other questions, observations?
There was no, there's no intention of, like, where the JW's, that sign, because originally you were going to have it there as well on that, correct?
That was an initial concept that never materialized.
All right.
It just went forward as JW Burger, and we weren't included in that, so that never happened. So that's when I elected to put my own closer to the house, knowing that there was no space left, you know, really, from a visibility point of view, to put it on the driftway anyways.
Okay.
I think the signage does good. It also helps control the traffic around here. Anything else?
I wanted to say thank you for coming and participating with us. And as has been said, I think the end result is a superior result.
Thank you.
And I hope that financially, all that you hope to realize from this facility will be what you get.
Appreciate that comment very much. Thank you. Things will be a little slow now. But there's always next May.
Just work out a degree of the hockey brick. You'd be all set. Like laying sod one cube at a time.
Well, I'm always hopeful for an Indian summer, but we have to have a first frost, right? That's the technical term, right?
I don't know if we'll have that repeated from last year. It's quite a stretch.
I move to approve the existing sign onsite at 17 New Driftway for the... Um, I move to approve the existing sign onsite at seventeen New Driftway for the Green Bush Ice House, and to recommend that a full certificate of occupancy for the Ice House be granted, as the Ice House has met all of the conditions of the Site Plan Administrative Review modification issued on five twenty-two, two thousand twelve, and modified on seven twelve, two thousand twelve.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks again.
Can you put us right back on schedule, too?
Glad to have helped out with that.
You got your sign, and I got my schedule. Everybody's happy. Okay. That's a couple minutes early, but the next item is to discuss the need for the stormwater permit for eighty-seven Maple Street. I guess, Laura, I'm not sure the most efficient way of addressing this.
No, I, I don't mind letting them go first, you know?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky, and I represent Ken Duval, who is with me this evening. He's the owner of the property. And as you may know, Ms. Harbottle sent Mr. Duval a letter asking him to stop clearing a portion of his property, and suggesting that he requires a stormwater permit to continue his work. He's cleared, at this point, approximately one acre of woods on the property. It's been graded with the intention to create a storage area for his boat, his lobster traps, his tractor, and an area for his grandchildren to play. There's been no house or project proposed. He's simply cleared this portion of his property. No impervious surface has been installed. There's been no work within one hundred feet of the wetland, with the exception of a stockpile of soil that was placed approximately eighty-eight feet from what we've discovered is an area of wetlands on the property. That stockpile has been removed, so it's actually outside of the one hundred-foot buffer to those wetlands, and actually surrounded with erosion controls. No evidence of any sultation getting into that wetland system. At this point in time, I don't believe the Conservation Commission has any jurisdiction over these activities, because they're more than one hundred feet from those wetlands. I, I do have a aerial photograph which I can show to you to just give you a sense of this, if you're at all interested. It's approximately five-acre parcel of land. There's an existing house, and forgive me, I don't have my board with me this evening. And the area that was cleared was, apparently, there's, there's an existing cement pad and a stone foundation, probably a historic structure there at some point. But it's this area right in here that was cleared. This is the wetland which was discovered over here, and again, all of the work now is more than one hundred feet away. Happy to leave that with you if you wanna refer to it, but it's the only copy I've got. We respectfully suggest that the work performed is not subject to the town's stormwater bylaw. I think it's fairly clear from a reading of your bylaw. Section three A defines those activities which are regulated under the bylaw. And the only activity that may possibly be relevant is provided in Section three A one, which says that you need a permit if you've got a development or a redevelopment project. And importantly, your regulations actually define what constitutes a new development. It's any alteration, and I'm quoting, "that will increase the building footprint or impervious area on the site in a manner that changes the drainage pattern onsite or offsite." Your regulations defines a development as relating to an increase in building footprint or the addition of impervious area. None of that is occurring on this site. There is no development as defined by your regulations. And as a result, we respectfully suggest that there's no jurisdiction under the bylaw. I actually went back and took a look at your public hearings when you discussed the adoption of the bylaw. And actually, Mr. Lindbacher, you made the point that you wanted to make sure that the bylaw and its regulations were consistent with the state stormwater regulations, which are actually embodied within the Wetlands Protection Act. And those regulations are found at three ten CMR ten point zero five six K. And if actually you take a look at your performance standards, they're taken directly out of the stormwater regulations. The stormwater standards have been incorporated into your bylaw. They're pretty much one and the same. In order to trigger jurisdiction under the Wetlands Protection Act, you need stormwater runoff from a project subject to regulation, including site preparation, construction, and redevelopment. And similarly, under the Wetlands Protection Act, you actually need a, a project that creates stormwater runoff in order for the regulations to be applicable. I respectfully suggest that the DEP would not require compliance with the stormwater regulations, because there's no project which gives rise to any stormwater discharge. And I, I can share with you a, a practical experience that I recently had with DEP. I had a client in Wareham. A neighbor next door proposed cutting a, essentially a path or a roadway through bordering vegetated wetlands to run golf carts to his boat moor. They were not proposing any impervious surface. They were literally going to be cutting through this BVW to create this path for this motorized vehicle. I argued to DEP that I thought that that was a project that would require compliance with the stormwater regulations, and DEP said no, because there was no installation of any impervious surface, despite regulations that seem to refer to footpaths and bike paths. That from DEP's perspective, that did not constitute a project, and therefore was not subject to the stormwater regulations. So I respectfully sug- suggest that this is simply not a regulated activity under your stormwater bylaw.
Well, the, the way that I got involved with this, this, um, you know, question of whether there should be some applicab- applicability of the stormwater bylaw was that I got a phone call from a neighbor of Mr. Duval, who wanted to know what all the, the noise, and, you know, had heard, like, a lot of, you know, construction vehicle noise over, like, a, you know, a couple of week period, according to him, and just wanted to know what was going on. So I went out to the site, and it's, it's an interesting site to get to. It's down, I don't know if anybody else, you know, if anyone on the board went there, but it was down along the road off of Maple Street. And at the back, there's this, you know, big, um, property. And from the, uh, from the, the way it looked, it looked like a large area had been cleared of, you know, about an acre or so, I'm, I'm, you know, guessing. And that it had been pretty, you know, pretty heavily wooded, and that the woods had been, you know, had been cleared. And that was kind of consistent with what this man was telling me about hearing a lot of, you know, construction noise and the grinding up of the, you know, the trees and so on. And I think that, um, yeah, I, I mean, the intent of the stormwater bylaw, as, as I understood it, and it certainly, you know, I mean, people can, you know, try to delve into, uh, you know, you, you can't really know what was in people's minds, but it was proposed by the Regional Planning Agency, and it was intended to regulate, I think, site preparation and construction activity, and anything that would really change the infiltration of, uh, stormwater into the soil. Now, whether it's really written exactly that way, um, you know, I think is, is another question, and it may need to be, to be tweaked if there's still consensus that that's what the town wants. But I think the initial idea was to try to prevent, um, grading or clearing or any of a whole variety of types of activities that usually happen before someone builds a house. Um, I mean, I think it's unusual to clear that large of an area, you know, without, without building a house there. But that's, you know, that's not, you know, for me to say if anyone's, you know, gonna build a house there or not. So, anyway, at, at the time of writing the letter, it seemed pretty clear that the bylaw would probably apply to it, you know, which is why I wrote it, and then, you know, um, Attorney Brodsky wrote, wrote his letter back, and, you know, I had to kind of scratch my head and look at it, and, um, you know, I can see that it could go either way. But I think the initial spirit of that bylaw, and not everyone on the planning board at the time agreed with, with that bylaw. There was a split in the vote to support it, and it wasn't unanimous. It was adopted by town meeting, so I think, you know, that's another, another factor. But, um, I think the, the intention was to prevent, um, stormwater impacts on adjacent properties, which, you know, this, you know, may not have, because it's such a large area. Um, I mean, I think there is potentially a requirement to, to get a NIPD's permit when you're clearing that big of an area, but that's something-
Only if there's a discharge to a federal navigable water.
Okay.
And there's no evidence that we're discharging to any federal navigable water, so as far as I understand, we don't require a NIPD's permit.
Okay. Okay, well, in any case, getting back to the stormwater bylaw, um, you know, I think it's, it's a bit of a toss-up, and, um, you know, we're just gonna have to figure out how you wanna interpret all this.
Questions, comments, or the board?
Well, I guess as a non-lawyer person, the way I understand it, it comes down to what we define as a project. You're saying a project is not, um, or it was defined by DEP as not, you could clear a pathway, walkway. This, this area is not considered to be a project.
Actually, it's, it's more clearer than that. Mr. Taylor, your regulations define a new development. You have a specific definition that requires a building footprint or an increase in impervious area. So I think it's clear under your own regulations that this is not a development subject to regulation. I, I alluded to the stormwater regulations under the Wetlands Protection Act, because that really formed the basis for the performance standards under your bylaw. They were taken right out of that. And I just wanted to make the point that DEP would not consider this to be a project subject to regulation under the stormwater regulations under the Wetlands Protection Act. But what's in front of you now is your own bylaw. Now, I, I don't disagree with Ms. Harbottle's, uh, uh, statement that, you know, one of the purposes of the stormwater bylaw was to address construction impacts. In fact, um, one of your performance standards, Section nine point seven, talks about construction impacts. That's actually taken right out of the wetlands regulations. That's Stormwater Management Standard eight. But you don't even reach that, because there's no jurisdiction. There's no development as defined specifically under your bylaw. There's no, the terminology under the stormwater reg- is, is project. That would trigger then compliance with your Section nine point seven or stormwater standard eight. So I, I respectfully suggest, I, I don't disagree with, with that being an intent. But your regulations were written, and you were, you know, the, and specific definitions provided, and we have to comply with the strict meaning of your bylaw and your regulations.
Yeah?
Yeah, I went through it kind of line by line in your letter and everything, and I think it's arguable whether it falls under our jurisdiction or not. You know, quoting from what you put forth, new development is any alteration, construction, or land disturbance on a parcel of land. So clearly, it's a land disturbance. It's over fifteen thousand square feet. Says whether currently a natural, vegetated, or developed state, so it meets all of those criteria. But then it goes on to say that will increase the building footprint, which it doesn't, or impervious area on the site. That's where I get hung up, right there, impervious area. And then it says in a manner that changes, changes the drainage pattern onsite or offsite. Clearly, it changes the drainage pattern if you're going from forested to non-forested, so.
It, it would not, because we haven't changed the topography. It was level, and it remains level. I think in one area, there's an area where it slopes downward.
Right, but you understand forested slows down the flow of water across the surface versus non-forested. Vegetated versus non-vegetated has a very different characteristic of how drainage flows and permeates through the ground.
Well, I, I'm not sure you can make a general statement regarding that. I mean-
I think you can.
Oh, well, I, I mean, I-
Tree, tree roots in the ground and, you know, vegetation.
Well, we can talk about evapotranspiration and things like that. It would depend upon the site.
I, I completely disagree with that. So you think that it doesn't change the drainage characteristic if a site is vegetated versus not vegetated?
I, I can't answer that, because I need to know specifically, you know, what the vegetation is, what the topography is, what the soil conditions are.
For this site.
For this site.
If this site is level and you remove the trees, no, I don't, again, I'm not an engineer. I'm just an environmental lawyer. But you're not gonna change the drainage characteristics. That is water moving off that site without a slope.
So there's zero slope on the site? What's the percentage?
It's relatively level. We'd have to go out there and get a survey and shoot the-
So there's some slope to it.
I, I think you admit it's pretty darn close to being flat.
It, it was flat, but a lot of grading looked like it had taken place. I mean, it was the-
Yes, but it's flat now.
It's flat now?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what it was like before.
It had a slight slope before. If anything, I would think would improve.
Well, there you go. So clearly, it meets that.
We're now keeping water onsite than if, if any water went offsite. I, I, again, that's for an engineer to-
Well, it sounds like he's just saying that the drainage pattern's been changed, because there was a slope, and now there's not a slope. So obviously, the drainage pattern has changed, then.
Would it have improved?
Well, that's not the question. I'm trying, I'm doing the legal definition here, because that's his argument, and so clearly, it meets that. So the, so the piece that I'm struggling with is that it still has the requirement that it had to increase the impervious area on the site. And, you know, I've looked at a few definitions of that, and I, I'm just not sure, and I, I look at our, there's a definition of impervious, uh, surface in our bylaws. It's the closest that I could find an impervious area. Says any material or structure on or above the ground that prevents water from infiltrating through the underlying soil. And then it includes, without limitation, paved surfaces, parking lot sidewalks, all the things you'd think of as, like, true improvements to the property, which they don't have any of those. So clearly, you know, it's, it, it seems like they're thinking about, you know, hard surfaces. They do talk about comp- compacted dirt-surface roads. So, you know, if there was compaction in anticipation of future construction or something like that, I think arguably that could be in it, but it doesn't sound like that was done. It's just simply been cleared, right, and graded?
That's, that's all that's been done.
So- Has it been compacted?
So, I, I mean, I think the intent was to capture things like this. I don't think that the bylaw necessarily covers that. I think it's somewhat gray, but I do tend to think it probably favors them when I read it, because it seems to contemplate more of, you know, the true hard surfaces when it talks about impervious. So you think about, you know, building a building, you know, building a parking lot, building, you know, compacting dirt, something like that. I, I think it meets every other criteria in our bylaw in terms of definitions, but, um, you know, so two things, I think. One, I, I, you know, I wish it did cover this, because clearing fifteen thousand square feet of land, maybe not in this instance, maybe it wouldn't have much of an effect. But you think about, you know, some property in town that has a slope to it. There's been problems in town with developments when it's not been handled properly, and you have, you know, mud and water going on to adjacent properties and things like that. So, so clearly, I think when this was written, I think most people probably would have thought it would cover something like this. I don't necessarily see any harm from what's been done if it's a flat, truly a flat surface, and, you know, in this instance, I, you know, it's not next to the wetland. So I'm not as concerned about this instance as I am in general. I don't like the idea that someone could go clear fifteen thousand square feet of land and not be subject to our stormwater bylaw.
Well, fifteen acres.
Yeah, I think, I think they should be. So, so I think at minimum, we need to look at doing an amendment to this at a town meeting to clarify it. I think you could make an argument that this falls under it. I think it's somewhat of a difficult argument to make potentially, and I, I think if we wanted to go that direction, we definitely wanna get advice of, like, town council before we went down that path.
Could I throw one more complexity into this, just looking back at our Water Resources Protection Zones and the non-disturbance buffer zone? Does this fall into that at all? Because this is relatively close to, to tributaries. Because this is relatively close to, to tributaries to, to, you know, tack pond.
Ah, let's see.
And in that case, there's non-disturbance includes earth movement or disturbances of any kind. So.
Right. A zone one or zone two?
Correct.
Zone A is zone two.
Yeah.
Well.
I, I can't tell just from looking at this map. So.
Officially.
Well, as it might adopt it, yes, it'd be under the old.
It looks like it's within a zone two, actually, um, which is another whole angle of, you know, looking at the zoning bylaw and how that applies.
Yeah.
And that's all, you know, really enforced through the zoning enforcement officer. Um, but yeah, it does look like the whole property's in a zone two, to a well. So, um, you know, I know there's some impervious, you know, surface, not, well, maybe there are, maybe I'll have to read and see exactly, um, you know, what we're, you know, what we're saying about that. Now.
Any other comments while Laura's looking at?
Yeah, I, I have a thought. You know, it, it seems to me that this is going to turn on the question of what impervious means. Um, you know, I, I, if, if I sort of read between the lines, you're suggesting that impervious means essentially waterproof. You know, so if we put, uh, but on the other hand, if we're changing the imperviousness, that means that at some point it could, you know, water could infiltrate. And then if we change the imperviousness, either more water or less water infiltrates. So that it doesn't mean that it was necessarily blacktop or concrete and waterproof. It just means that we changed the degree, the, the speed at which water percolates, for lack of a better word, through the soil.
If, if I can be practical, and I know this is a very practical word, when you have a, a project that creates impervious surfaces, you're, you're less interested in infiltration than stormwater moving off that property. That's why, you know, you have the stormwater standards. You have to make sure that peak flows remain the same or not.
But we're talking about exactly the same thing. That's how we treat stormwater is we get it.
If I, if I might.
It injects in. Go ahead.
No, no, if I might. Uh, and as a result, you're required to design a stormwater management system that complies with the BMPs. Here, we're cleaning land. If you're required that we submit a stormwater bylaw, I guess you're going to be asking us to create a stormwater management system for the clearing of land on which there's no proposed structure or impervious surface. So that, that's as far as I understand, the practical effect of requiring that we submit an application. Uh, I mean, again, I, I've been doing this for some time. I've never been required to design a stormwater management system for removing trees and grading. Agreed. If at any time in the future, um, there's a proposal to build a structure, uh, and your bylaw specifically, you know, says you can't do this in phases, you know, well, we're going to consider the whole project. If, if indeed there's going to be a project proposed for that cleared area, um, no doubt that we'll need to come and see you and, uh, apply for a stormwater permit. But that would make sense because at that point in time, we would need to actually design and install a stormwater management system that complied with the BMPs.
What about if you began the farm?
Excuse me?
What about if you began the farm?
Uh, different. There's an agricultural exemption in your bylaw.
Yeah, we can't regulate that, but.
You can't regulate that.
I mean, I think the question, I mean, the question unfortunately, I mean, it doesn't apply to your property, but you think about if this were a, you know, significantly sloped property next to somebody's house and they cleared 15,000 feet of forest, clearly the runoff would speed up and cause problems for that neighbor. So in that case, I think you would need a stormwater management plan and, and want one. But the question is, do we capture that with our current bylaw?
I, I, I think there needs to be some clarifications. And I would be one that would, that would vote for the expansive view as, and, and catch this in that. Not that I want to cause you any difficulty. Um, but, you know, the, the rules that we're trying to create here are beyond just your particular project or lack thereof. Um, and we, we don't want to get caught, we've been caught a couple of times in the past where, you know, people came in and apparently, um, met the standards. We turned them loose on their way. And then the next thing you know, what they did was completely different than what we had anticipated. Um, and we don't want, the rules have to apply to everybody and have to be predictable. And we want to make sure that happens.
And I guess.
I think where we disagree is, is what the rules say. And I think that, uh, a plain reading of, of your regulation, I, I think if your intention is to regulate clearing of land, you have to revise your regulations, um, in order to address that. But as written, as the, you know, regulations stand, I respectfully suggest that it's.
I, I understand. And I, and I think, like I said, I think it boils down to what we consider impervious to mean. Whether it's a change in, in the porosity of the, of the, of the earth, or whether it means waterproof.
Well, this board defined impervious surface. And nothing that we've done out there meets your definition of impervious surface. Again, if the intention is to have a more broad definition, you've got the ability to change your regulations and broaden your jurisdiction. But, you know, uh, as the regulations and bylaw are written, it says what it says.
Well, I, I don't think we, we defined it to exclusion anything else here because it was defined in a way that said, without limitation, here are some examples. So, and those examples included cases that weren't asphalt, but just compacted dirt roads. So.
Again, I, I'm not an engineer. I'm not a wetland scientist. Um, given my experience of doing this for a very long time, I think I would have the better of the argument that, uh, you know, graded topsoil is not considered to be an impervious surface.
Are there any, um, it looks like you're pretty much surrounded by forests. Where's your closest neighbor that would be even affected by this? Is there anybody even close by?
There's a church that shares the same driveway or retreat for the Catholic church. And there's, um.
Where is that in vicinity to where the clearing is?
Same driveway going down. They might even be on that.
May.
Because it looks like there's kind of forested area to the.
Is it here on the side?
It's mostly conservation land all, all around.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's, it's.
So.
That's correct. It's this building right here.
Yeah.
And so the workers on the opposite side.
So I mean, I guess what I'm leaning towards on this is it, it seems like what's been done doesn't really have any real impact from what I can tell on anybody in a negative way right now. And I, I do think there's some gray on the, in the law. So, so in a way, maybe this was nice that this was our test case that came up where it isn't one.
You want to adopt the no harm, no foul?
Well, that's, that's sort of what I'm leaning towards because in this case, I, I don't see any real harm coming to neighbors. But I, I do see a gap in the, in the bylaw that could hurt us if this were a different set of circumstances. So, uh, that's what I'm leaning towards is saying, hey, let's fix this at town meeting and, you know, maybe not turn this into a Supreme Court case over the definition of impervious.
Yeah. Well, let me, let me tell you where I come down. I, not as a non-legal, I'll give you my non-legal opinion. But I think what triggers it is, is the, it's either new development or redevelopment. This is, that's what triggers the bylaw. And this is neither one of those. And those are pretty clearly defined. So there's no, there's no wiggle room, if you would, in terms of the definition that triggers the need to either have or not have.
But just to point out, it meets every piece of it other than impervious area potentially.
And I'm not sure you could, I, I, in my own mind, I can't, I couldn't tell you that if I had an area that had a mixture of trees and, and underbrush as to whether that's any different than if I have arborvitae and grass.
Mm-hmm.
Right. And that's ultimately what, if I understand what the transition is. So you're currently in a transition now. You've, you've cut it, you've leveled it, and you've, now then at some point, you're going to come and either grass it over and then put some arborvitae or some, some.
Right, stabilize it.
So I really can't tell you that one between one or the other. The other thing that, that rested in my mind is, is that Concom lives under the same subdivision or the, uh, stormwater bylaw that we do. And they ended up, and looked at it and didn't see that there was a need for their stormwater review.
But they're not, they're not jurisdictional though, right?
Yeah, they, it.
They're not within a hundred by buffer or anything. So they couldn't have looked at it.
Oh, but they could have picked it up, sat there and said, you know, there, there's a need for it and you go to the plate board together.
Well, only if it's within a hundred feet of the wetland.
Only if they're a hundred feet of the wetland.
There is an exception to that. And I don't want to argue, the only exception would be is if, if in fact there was siltation erosion into the wetland, that would create jurisdiction.
Right.
That wasn't the case in this instance.
But they, they don't have the same, they're not looking at the same thing we're looking at.
Where I come down is, is, one is I don't think I got jurisdiction to tell them that I need a stormwater with the, the stormwater, that he falls under the stormwater bylaw. But I, but I do think I need to give him credit for bringing it to our attention.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Correct. And the other thing I was going to point out too is that if he does go to build a house there in the future, then it will be jurisdictional because it talks about, um, you know, if you do the project in phases.
Correct.
It aggregates over time. And so at the point, if he did want to build something, even if at the point he's doing that, you know, two years from now or whatever, he's not disturbing more than 15,000 square feet. Since he did before, it's, it aggregates. So we would be seeing him back to address it then.
We wouldn't be happy.
Which gives me some comfort that, you know, if something is ever done there, we can talk about it then. But, but, but I also don't think it's a, it's a huge issue if the site's flat and there don't seem to be neighbors right next to it. And I, and I don't, I don't see the big danger here of anything.
Well.
But I, I would also say that we ought to let town council at least look at, I, I don't think we should adopt the legal interpretation that's come to us.
Yeah.
We ought to make sure that we're comfortable because it is setting, you know, a precedent here. So.
Well, I, I think we've, we've got, you know, a fairly peaceful, calm situation here in order to, to bring this to, to, to a debate, to bring it to our, our attention. And I would agree that the wording in the law, the, uh, the bylaws should, we should look at that for some adjustment perhaps to cover, cover something like this. Um, I agree with Laura that, you know, disturbance is disturbance whether or not connected to imminent or future development. And certainly there's plenty of ways that what you've done could have been disruptive to your neighbors, to adjacent wetlands, to water quality, whatever. I think that, that none of that's happened. So that's, that's good. We don't have to, you know, sort of come down under adverse circumstances with a, with a, a, a judgment that's, that's driven by that. Um, it's clear to me that when we adopted the bylaw, our intent was to be in line with DEP's view on this issue, just the way we've done with the Water Protection District tonight. Um, but I don't think that we are as protected as we, as we might need to be under other circumstances. And I agree that we should look at the, look at the, uh, the wording for some, for certainly some amendment. Um, so that's, you know, that's where I'm coming from.
Laura, so where we stand right now, you sent a letter which is sort of, you know, this may fall under the jurisdiction, but it falls with the zoning enforcement officer, right? To say if this does or doesn't, we can certainly interpret it. But at this point, I, I don't know that we need to officially vote on anything. It's just a question of whether we encourage the zoning enforcement officer to pursue this as a violation or we table it and consult with town council and.
Yeah, I'm completely on that page.
Yeah, that's, I, I don't think, you know, to your point, Steve, I, I don't think we need to make an official proclamation on this or set a precedent because we're saying it's gray at this point. But we can decide to sort of table this.
Mm-hmm. I think it would also be good for somebody who's got jurisdiction on the, on the buffer zone issue, just to look at it as well. I assume it's his only board.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you, you mean the buffer to the wetlands? You mean the buffer?
To the water resources, protection area. Yeah.
Sure. Yeah. Well, it looks like it falls, it falls outside of that, that buffer to the tributaries. I mean, you know, based on this map, which is, you know, about as good a thing as we have anywhere in town to define where those tributaries are. So it, it looks like it's, you know, it's, there's not a problem where it comes to that.
Laura, we thank you for coming down, spending the evening.
I think, I think so.
Yeah. At, at some point, I, I guess we would ask for some sense of the board as to a resolution of this. I, I just, I would hate to be, uh, put Mr. Duggan in a, in a position where there's a clear guidance on the issue. But, uh, how we get there or not, I, I.
From, from what I was saying that.
Up to you.
I, I can draft a letter from, from Bill to Neil Duggan, just saying that the planning board discussed it and maybe found that there was not, um, an issue of the, uh, of applicability of the bylaw based on some, you know, questions about, you know, the language in the bylaw that.
I think Laura, that's where we have to be careful. I don't, we want to say anything official because we, we don't want to set a precedent if something else comes in between now and maybe when we amend the bylaws. Like, I understand, I understand your concern.
We received a very nice cease and desist letter.
Yeah.
And we don't want to do anything in violation of that.
I, I think probably what we need to do is, yeah, if there's a cease and desist, is that then.
Well, um.
Can we, can we just, can we just take no action?
Well, I think if they're in a cease and desist mode, then I think maybe it's.
I didn't.
Okay. It's almost like a null trust thing if you're.
Is there other work that we're, that you've stopped doing because of this letter? Are you done with what you're doing for now?
Put the gun down.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I think the way this letter reads, it says, um, you know, that the issue has to be resolved. It doesn't say how. It doesn't say stop work. Uh, I mean, it says before any work continues. But I mean, I think, I think this has resolved it.
It does say these issues must be resolved before any more work continues. So I.
Well, I, I mean, I think that.
Again, it was a very nice letter. I'm not taking issue with the, with the, it was a very nice cease and desist order. But based upon this, we have a letter.
In effect, what we've done is we've created a cease and desist forum that we, we need to undo that.
Well, and this letter came from Laura as the town planner, right? This was never voted on. Well.
Yeah. Um.
Did we, I'm trying to remember. We discussed this. Did we, did we have an official vote to send the letter? That's what I can't remember.
Um, I, I know I let you know about it. Um, I, I'm sure there was not a vote on it.
I, I mean, I think my preference from a legal standpoint is maybe Laura, you write a follow-up letter that comes from you, but not from us.
Okay. That's, that's fine.
Saying, you know.
That's, that's fine. That we have permission to continue work provided we don't, you know, build a building or install, you know, whatever you need us to do. Yeah. I mean, just give us permission to go forward.
The letter could just say.
You could just retract your prior letter.
Make sure you follow the rules in the future and we'll be happy.
Never mind.
That sounds.
Never mind.
I, I think maybe that's the way to do it.
Or it could say, simply say the issues have been resolved with the planning board. And thank you very much. I mean, that, that'd be fine by us.
I think I want to stay away from saying it's coming from the planning board. I, I think the simple way to do it is just simply retract your letter.
Okay.
I think I would just do that.
Easy to do.
Just send a letter and just say, hereby retract my letter. And just don't say anything about opinion or anything. Just retract it for now. And, and then we can go forward and we can address whatever fix we need in the bylaw.
Issue yet.
And just don't mention anything about an official planning board action because we don't want to, we're not making that decision because we need advice of town council to do that. And.
Okay.
Okay. Does that, does that work for you? To simply retract the letter?
We just want to complete the work out there for.
Right.
And you'll copy the same people you copied on the first one.
Yeah. I think just retract the letter and with no explanation, just, you know, thanks for coming in, you know, where you retract the letter and.
Very nice to see you.
And we'll fix it for the next time. So we don't have an issue.
Enjoy this time together.
Yes. Hope you did as well. Yes. Thanks for coming in.
Adam, it's always a pleasure, sir.
Yes. Yeah. Thanks for coming in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Now we're 17 minutes behind schedule. But we're getting closer to Bob's motion. Uh, we're now under all business, new business, correspondence, and administrative. First of which is minutes. Do we have minutes? Well, we're going to pick some time up there. How about accounting?
So it looks like we have three bills. And, uh, let's see. I move that we approve $120.60 to community newspapers for the legal ad and the Situate Mariner for the accessory dwelling special permit for Five Third Avenue. I also move that we approve $9.99 to WB Mason, uh, for day at a glance, uh, datebook and calendar for office supplies. And I move that we approve $15.48 to Schwab for, uh, the nameplate for the new alternate, um, Stephen.
Second.
Wow. That's a big expense.
I brought my own. Is that all of them?
That's all three.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good.
That is a nice nameplate. I was just noticing that.
High, high visibility white.
It's not what we're getting for.
Yeah.
You know, it'd be cheaper to throw all these away and put a, give us a paper one than to sit there and buy the new one for him.
Yeah.
Well, you, you guys are grandfathered with your, you know.
Mine's been there so long it's probably faded anyway. Uh, did town planner report?
Yeah. Um, I was going to try and, um, give you all an update on my involvement with grants for the town. I'm going to try to do this every, you know, maybe every month or so, every six weeks, six weeks or so, just so that I can, um, keep. just so that I can, um, keep you all abreast of what's going on with, with the grant activity that I'm involved with. So, um, first of all, I wanna mention that the grant that the Economic Development Committee applied for last year, the thirty thousand dollars for the market analysis, it looks like we're gonna go for that again this year. It's gonna be involving the, well, one of the people is gonna have to change, because he's no longer with MAPC, but the other one will be the same gentleman who came to their meeting last year, who they all seem to like very much. And, um, he would be working directly with them to, to do a market analysis. I'm hoping very much that we get those funds this year, since we were turned down last year. So, you know, hopefully that will, that will happen.
Who's the grant to? Who, who are we asking it from?
It's, uh, it's to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, to the, the Regional Planning Agency, and it's called District Local Technical Assistance.
Is, is this the grant that I, that I wrote last year?
Oh, that one.
Okay, that, that one.
Okay, well, I mean, w- we were all involved with it, so, um, so there's, there's that, uh, which is, the maximum that we can get is thirty thousand dollars, and I don't know that we will get the maximum, but at least if we get something that gets us that market analysis, we're helping them move forward towards something that, that they need to do and they want to do. The second one, um, that, that I'm, I have some involved with, involvement with right now is a FEMA grant for two home elevations. It's three hundred and one thousand dollars. On that one, uh, we just signed a contract and returned it back to MEMA. That's the kind of intermediary agency that we deal with, that deals with FEMA for at the town. And, um, that's gonna help two people elevate their homes that, you know, would not, you know, that won't have to spend the money doing it. And the third is, um, the Green Communities Grant that we have. Uh, we got the money, uh, a couple of years ago, and it's just been kind of hanging, waiting for us to identify what projects we're going to use it for. Um, I think we're a couple of steps closer to identifying those projects, because the, um, ESCO report is out. And, um, actually, Bill, I don't know if you have a copy of the report, but I have a copy of it, and maybe, you know, once I've gone, I just got it today, but, um.
I know it was being finalized, I didn't realize that there were, it was, it had been done at this point.
Yeah, it's, it's been done, so, um, so maybe we can, you know, I'd love to get some input on identifying those projects. Um, and that's a hundred.
Is it available electronically, or is it just a hard copy?
Uh, all I've seen is a hard copy. And anyway, that's a hundred and sixty-three thousand, so that's a, a good chunk of change for the town. Um, and finally, I wanted to, um, kind of, uh, explain and offer, um, you all an opportunity to maybe, um, come up with some ideas for a program that has some money in it right now. It's called the Priority Development Fund, and, um, this can be for, um, strategic planning, preparing zoning changes, um, implementing strategies for creation of housing. The one thing about this particular program, there has to be a housing component, so you can bring in mixed use in commercial areas and, and ways to facilitate that, that, um, that involve a housing component. So, um, so I was gonna distribute the guidelines to you all and, um, ask you to take a look at them and see if you come up with any ideas, and maybe we can talk about it at the next meeting. So there's one of each of those, and, um.
May I ask a, a, a follow-up question on another grant that we, well, it wasn't our grant per se. The, um, the three A corridor from that Cohasset was doing.
Yeah.
From Hern, or Henry Turner Bailey to, what was it, the Cohasset Town Line?
Yeah.
So what's the status? I mean, I know that they got the money, and we were part of that, right?
Well, they don't have the money yet. They're on the, um, Transportation Improvement Program. They're part of this, um, state transportation planning, um, schedule. There's sort of a hierarchy for what projects get done first, and this one, I think it's scheduled out a couple of years. So I don't think that's gonna happen right away, but I'll check on that and find out.
No, I'm just curious what the, the status was.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's worth looking into.
We were just lending support to that.
Right.
No, actually, they're, they were gonna do, um, some planning for three A down to Henry Turner Bailey.
Yeah, but it was an add-on to their study.
Oh, it was an add-on?
Yeah.
So to that effect, we came back and supported their original study, so that they could come back.
And my question just was, where does that stand? That's all.
Yeah, 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 good, good question. I'll, I'll look and find out.
Liaison reports?
Next week is the South Shore Coalition, which is the sub-region for the MAPC, and it's supposed to be on transit-oriented development, which sounds very interesting and very appropriate, so.
And you'll be there?
I will be there.
Anybody else? I have got, um, the REC committee has put together a three to five-year plan. Um, I've got it in an email. I really haven't had a chance to take a look at it. Let me come back and take a look at it, and then I'll just brought it to you guys. What it does is, it's in response to CPC saying, what program, with, because of the major change at CPC that allows them to go back and, and do, to do things on rec fields that weren't created through CPC, that in effect, what it does is it allows them to come back up, put together their five-year plan in terms of what they'd be looking for for CPC activity, or CPA activity. I've got it, um, in, let me just look at it, and then I'll just, I'll send it to Laura, and then Laura can send it out to everybody. Anything else? How about Bob's motion?
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry. I had one question that I emailed you about, and it's more informational, so I don't know, I think it's okay if you're here. It was just curious about Walnut Tree Hill. I had a question from a neighbor, and I don't know.
Okay, I, did you just email me tonight, or?
No, it was a few days ago. It was the day that we ran into each other with coffee, Friday.
Oh, okay.
Cause I said, um, I thought maybe you had only had a half-day or something, but it was like Friday afternoon, anyway.
Yeah, okay.
Purely informational. She actually really liked, there's the, um, the path from Old Oak and Bucket back to the, that they're clearing, or they had cleared for the drainage, and they did all the things, they, they did everything they were supposed to. And it goes back to the water pump station, I think.
Yep.
And they've kind of made, I don't even know if it's gravel or whatever, they cleared it.
Yeah.
And her question was just, she really likes it, is it going to be maintained, or was it meant to be a path? I just was curious as to what the status was there.
Um, it's basically for access for the water department to, to be able to get in there, because there's a big water main that goes in there, and it, that's a booster pump station for the water system.
Correct.
But anybody could walk on it. I mean, I don't think there's any problem with, you know, with anyone walking on it. In fact, I think there was discussion about connecting to North East Estates at one point. Um, maybe you remember better than I do, Bill.
I remember, I remember the discussion, and I, I thought.
Well, I guess the reason it's always been, o- over the last few years, completely grown over and everything, but now that they've, they've done that work, they've actually made it nice.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's supposed to stay like that.
Okay.
But it's gonna be up to the town to maintain it.
All right, that's the question then, okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, the, the feedback was that it was very positive, and hopes that it continues to be maintained or available to walk, um, through.
Good.
Anything else? Laura, there's a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
You need to pass the cookies, yeah?
All right, I'll take, you know what, I had one earlier.
Now, after the coffee's all gone, we get to eat the cookies. It would have been really good, the coffee. Thank you.
Richard, will you give me a coffee?
To quote Jean Powell from Seven Rides for Seven Brothers, these cookies can stand on their own.
I thought you baked them strictly for Kevin.
Oh, I thought it was just a nice excuse.
They're very good.
Okay, thank you.
Why is stuff?